Special Assembly meeting to order on November 7. Ms. Glashewski, would you land acknowledgement, please?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on Klinkit land and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaska Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klinkit people. Gunoch Chish.
Thank you, Ms. Glashewski. Madam Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Trem. Do we have Ms. Trem on the phone? She had been zooming in, I thought.
She, it sounds like she got disconnected. She was texting.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hugh Scandies.
Here.
Ms. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Bryson.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Wall.
Present.
Well, I'll eat on. Ms. Glashewski.
Here.
Mayor Weldon.
Here.
A Coram is present.
Thanks, and we'll just, oh, there's Ms. Trem. Ms. Trem, do you hear us?
I can't. I think I'm gonna.
You're pretty broken, Ms. Trem. Do you want to just call in?
Much to phone now.
I think that's what she's telling us. So Ms. Trem is gonna switch to a phone call. First of all, I want to apologize for my voice. Working the ski sale this weekend, apparently I was so excited, I lost my voice. And also, on a Saturday note, I just want to acknowledge the passing of Bert Connell. He was a great statesperson for the state of Alaska and hugely involved in Alaska Municipal League and several other items. So our thoughts and prayers go out to his family. And if you saw your email today, I think his service is on December 3 up in Wasilla. Madam Clerk, would you give instruction for public participation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for, in the public participation via Zoom or telephone call, individuals will have needed to call and sign up in advance to the clerk's office. And we do have a couple of individuals who have done that today. The public participation on non-agenda items is limited to no more than five minutes per any individual, no more than 20 minutes total. The link for the Zoom is at the top of the Assembly webpage. For those individuals in the room who might wish to testify, there is a testimony sheet at the back of the room. If you have not already signed up to testify, please do so at this time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Manager, is there any request for agenda changes?
No agenda changes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Public participation on non-agenda items, we will take care of the two people on Zoom first. At this time, we will give everybody three minutes. So Madam Clerk, will you bring a tie, Nusia, over, please? And Ms. Nusia, you have three minutes. Please state your name and area, town you live in.
Gunachish for welcoming me this evening. My name is Ati Nusia. I live 99801 Althean and have lived on Klinkit-on-E for about 17 years and feel very grateful to be a part of this community. Thank you for hearing my words. I have come to learn that the hiring policies within CBJ might benefit from some reflection and analysis. Recently learning that director level positions are not required to be opened up to the greater public. And so just wanted to make sure that the Assembly was aware of this. I know when I learned about this, it seemed both very simple challenge, simple problem that could be easily addressed. If we are concerned and committed to inclusion and racial equity, opening up positions with significant opportunity for impact and power across the community would really benefit to be open to the larger community so that we could diversify our city leadership with the brilliance and wealth and views of so many that might not be currently reflected or represented. So I'm joining tonight with an ask and an invitation and a plea to lean in together and think about how we might work together to revise or update a policy that could really further promote inclusion across the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for Ms. Nusia? Hopefully I said it better this time.
Yes, thank you.
Seeing no question, thank you for your testimony tonight.
Thank you. Have a good night.
And next we have Javier Camacho.
Madam Mayor, if Javier Camacho is on Zoom, if you could please raise your virtual hand.
If Javier Camacho is on Zoom, please raise your virtual hand so we can see you.
If I might, through the mayor, Madam Cathcart, they're calling in, and I believe it was one of the first phone numbers.
Well, there we go, last four, 9992. All right, I think we have you over. Please state your name and area, town you live in for the record, and you have three minutes. And you are still muted.
In order to unmute your phone, you would need to press star six.
Okay.
There you go. Please say your, we can hear you fine. Please state your name and area, town you live in for the record, and you have three minutes.
Peace, Johan. My name's Andres Javier Camacho. I live on Douglas. Just wanted, calling as well to echo the words of the previous person, Ati, also came to learn about kind of the current state of the hiring, or I guess the policy around publicizing director level positions. Have kind of something similar to say as Ati, you know, I think there's just, you know, the small steps that we can all take to improve the transparency and the inclusivity of our organizations. I think it's pretty easy to, you know, just get caught up in, you know, we continue on, you know, with the policies that we've inherited, perhaps not always thinking about how certain policies may constrain the work or the vision that we can put in place for our community. So just wanted to echo the words of the person before. And, you know, just call up to all of you to think about how we can make this policy at CBJ surrounding director position something that can perhaps increase or improve the work of CBJ by making, you know, hiring positions more accessible to all.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Camacho? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony tonight. Is there any member in the room that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we will move to our agenda topics. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is public hearing on ordinance 2022-56, an ordinance amending the land use code regarding alternative residential subdivision requirements.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager.
The Assembly created the alternative residential subdivision standards in 2019. The purpose of the ARS is to create flexibility in the regulation and use of land to promote and encourage different types of housing options. Property owners currently seeking approval from the Planning Commission for 440 units of housing using the ARS code. However, during the application review, staff and the Planning Commission identified a code inconsistency with the definition of unit lot. This ordinance would amend the unit lot definition to be consistent with the other ARS standards. This ordinance has not been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which is meeting tomorrow, November 8, to consider the 440 unit development. I recommend the Assembly adopt this ordinance without review by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this ordinance? Seeing none, we will bring it to the Assembly. Mr. Bryson.
Madam Mayor. I move the Assembly adopt ordinance 2022-56, amending the land use code, and ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that ordinance is adopted. Item three, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, this is Resolution 3005, a resolution encouraging federal agencies in Juneau to coordinate collection of biometric information for foreign national people and refugee families.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager.
Refugee families and foreign national people are required to submit biometric information. Currently, they have to travel to Juneau, from Juneau to either Anchorage or Seattle, which creates financial burdens for them, their employers, and local nonprofits. However, the Juneau Office of U.S. Customs and Border Protection has the ability to collect the biometric information. This resolution encourages two federal agencies to coordinate, which will decrease fiscal hardships to Ukraine refugee families, local families, seafood industry employers, and employees, and local nonprofits. I recommend you adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak to this resolution? Seeing none, we will bring it back to the Assembly. Ms. Hugh Scandies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move the Assembly adopt Resolution 3005, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Any objection? Seeing none, that resolution passes, and we'd like to thank Ms. Carrillo, the Philippine Honorable Consul, for pointing out that we missed a couple on that one, so hopefully that corrects it. Anyway, nothing further in front of the special assembly meeting, so we are adjourned.
All right, we'll call the Committee of the Whole Meeting of November 7 to order, and the Clerk will note the role, and is Ms. Trem on the phone? Okay, so everybody's here. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on Klinkit land and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than 10,000 years, Alaska Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well-being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the Klinkit people. Gunoch Chish.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any changes to the agenda? Anybody on that side? No, nobody's, okay. So we'll jump right into the first item, Huna Totem Support Dock Update. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. If you would introduce yourself to everybody, and thanks for coming and updating us on what's happening with your plans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does this work okay? Everybody, great. Appreciate being here. My name is Russell Dick. I'm the President and CEO of Huna Totem Corporation. I have Mickey Richardson with me, who is our Vice President of Marketing and Business Development for the company. And we like to say everything creative in the organization, as well as you will see in the presentation. I guess if you just indulge me, we've never sat in front of the Assembly. To my knowledge, as Huna Totem Corporation, we are the Alaska Native Corporation, representing the community of Huna. We have 15, over 1,500 shareholders with Aboriginal claims to the community of Huna and Glacier Bay. So to your point, we really appreciate and respect the land acknowledgement that you do at the beginning of each meeting. It's certainly, certainly very, very appreciated. We do have additional projects going on, as you've probably heard in the news. So Juneau is one that we're excited to take on. We do own and operate Icy Straight Point, which is a world-class facility over in the community of Huna. Hopefully you've all been there at this point, because it's been 18 years. But we are partnered with Kwakwena Corporation, the Alaska Native Corporation, down in Kwakwena, Prince of Wales Island. We're developing a new small ship cruise ship, cruise port down there in partnership with them. And we are working with the city of Whittier and building a new destination development in Whittier as a turnaround port as well. So this, for us here in Juneau, this is, this is exciting. Whittier is cool, but Juneau is certainly in our backyard as well, and we like to say that we are your neighbors. Over a third of our shareholders live here in Juneau. Our headquarters are here. So the opportunity for us to be here in front of you and to build a project that we think is going to be world-class and beneficial to the community is very, very exciting, exciting to us. You know, we started the RFI process, went through that process with Norwegian over a year ago. We were pretty excited because we've done work with them. We built something pretty incredible, we thought, in Huna. But one thing we didn't expect was the transfer, the gifting of this property to us. It wasn't part of the conversations we've had, so when this happened, you know, it took us by surprise. And we like to say that, you know, with any great gift comes great responsibility, right? And for us, when we think about responsibility here for this project, it means that we have to take on the challenges, the commitments, the concerns, and the ideas, all that were floated in this project over a year ago, when it was presented by Norwegian. So we have to, we have to take that on. But we also, I think we all know that that was all pre-pandemic. We're taking this on post-pandemic, and as you will see through Mickey's presentation here, that there are changes to the design that we're contemplating for the project. But we also think it's realistic and it's practical, and it still fits with the values and the culture of the community of Juneau and Huna Totum. So you'll see that our plans are certainly designed to the existing zoning of the waterfront parcel. We don't require any variances in the zoning rules or regulations. And everything you see will be built within the 2.9 acres. Can't be all things to all people. That's not a lot of property, but we're going to do our best to accommodate the expectations and the desires of the community. Now, we've learned a lot in our 18 years of working with Icy Straight Point. And there are a lot of things that certainly, as somebody who grew up in Huna, is from that community, is very proud of in terms of what we've built and the economic opportunities it's created for people. But it gives us a lot of insight into the opportunities we can create for the community of Juneau as well, and the values that we think are important as locals here in the region and in this community. So, you know, the ability to integrate our local values and culture into the design and the operation of the port, very, very important to us. Working together with the city of Juneau on additional tidelands into their portfolio, we're looking forward to working with the city on that. The Seawalk, we've got that built into our plan, as you will see. And creating the pedestal for Juneau's future development. You've been through the deck, you've seen kind of the phase three and what that looks like. We'll talk about that and what that means in the context of the presentation. And then something I think is near and dear to all of us, and that is creating a facility that is open year-round. And we like to say it's a place where the community meets, and Mickey will walk us through that as well, because that's very important. You know, I will say as well that when you, when you look at the presentation, you see retail in these different places. It means something different for us. You've got retail stores. When we say retail, we're thinking about food and beverage and restaurants as well. We're thinking about cultural spaces and activities, so that's all encompassed within what we define as retail. And when you think about stores, I think the important thing is we're not talking about stores that are open four or five months. Think about the Nugget Outfitters of the world, those stores that are here and open year-round in the community. Those are the types of partners that we're looking to include in this development. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm going to turn it over to Mickey and walk through the deck.
Thank you very much. And if it's okay with you, can we interrupt you if we have questions?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll just be looking down the row, and if someone has a question, I'll, I'll, I'll flag you down. You don't have to pay attention. I'll do it for you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if we can advance the slides forward to the methodology slide.
Other things? You can get rid of that. There you go. Thank you.
Just go forward one more slide. So once again, Madam Chair, Councilmembers, thank you for all being here tonight. It's an honor to be here in front of you and to talk about this project. And as Russell said, we started this process on the creative side well over a year ago and attract the progress of this property, and we're really excited to take it on as a challenge to design and develop really the gateway or entrance to Juneau. As you know, it's a very tough project. We really sat down with five core methodology or development concepts when we started designing. The first was representing Juneau and the local culture and history of Juneau, and you'll see that in the design. This one thing we've done very, very well, and how we integrate that at Icy Straight Point, very, very important to us. Two was curating of the traffic flow, and a lot of people think that's the way the buses turn left, and it's really not. It's really, how do we move people from the ship to their tours? How do we move guests that are coming along the Seawalk? And how do we do that in a very interesting way that creates the desire for guests to explore, but also ways that we can move them that keeps them safe throughout the process? And I'll talk to that a little bit with the Skybridge. Open for business year-round. This is very, very important to us. Having indoor parking facility is key, having a curated, curated retail restaurant experience that allows us to be open year-round is very, very important to us as well. And also creating activities that draw the community in throughout the year as well as part of that plan. And then, of course, this is a tough one, as Russell said, you know, a great gift comes with great responsibility. And so we've tried to take on in this design is many of the things that we've heard in the public space and being part of the process into the over-to-all design, knowing as number five is that we can't create, can't make buildings out of land that doesn't belong to us. There are zoning codes and guidelines that we try to adhere. And when we set out to design, we wanted to leave it with the existing zoning and code and follow everything within that 2.9 acres, which was a very, very difficult challenge, but we took that on in our overall design. So moving forward, one slide. So we wanted to make the cultural experience, as we traveled to ports around the world. One of the things that we realized that is that when you came off the ship, we wanted to make sure that you realized you were in a unique place and in a new, unique culture. Many of the ports around the world use space that we wouldn't normally consider as art space, but as an area to display the art and culture of the local place. And we thought, why not start telling the story from the minute you walk off the ship? We really feel like this Auk landing should be a place you walk off the ship, and it could be a tour, telling the story of the Aukwan people from the minute you walk off the ship, and that you realize, looking at the dock and looking at the facility, that you are in a special place that reflects the people. Next slide, thank you. And to do that, one of the concepts that we really fell in love with was this idea of doing something different from anywhere else in the world, and that was to take and create a curved trussel. And it sounds like a simple concept, but really is a feat of engineering. And that is, when most guests come off a ship, they're looking at the guest head of the person that's walking in front of them. Then, as we've seen around town, what happens is people are left to wonder, where do I go next? And it becomes like I'm following the herd. We wanted to try to eliminate that, but also to allow them to explore, as they're moving up and off the ship, where they're coming to, and also where they might like to explore. So we created a curved trussel that moves up around the bow of the ship, gives you a unique perspective, but also moves the guests from the, what we're going to call the 25-foot or ground level, up to the 45-foot level. So we separate the traffic again, but having that curve allows them to see where I want to go. I don't know if you can advance to the next slide? And we wanted to have them explore and be excited about what they could explore as they come off the ship. You see here, we come over top with the curved trussel over the top of the Seawalk. You can see the Seawalk down below, restaurants, cafes. I might like to go here later. And then also, as you come up, you're looking ahead of you. You can see here, and from this, we have these viewing platforms, as well as a center point, a totem in the middle, and this is the direction which we're going to flow our traffic. But as you walk off the ship, you know exactly where you want to go.
Mr. Richardson, excuse me for interrupting. Madam Mayor has a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. It's beautiful, but I come from an emergency background. How are you going to get ambulances and a fire truck down there?
Great, and a very good question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The way we do that is by separating, once again, the pedestrian traffic up the curved walkway, and we have an emergency trussel that we'll see in the additional slide that comes down from the lower level. And it accesses from our current design originally when we sat down, and we have had just this change with the Coast Guard in the last week, which was that the Coast Guard was not going to participate with the dock, forced us to move to the other side. But in this design, you'll see that this trussel here is the vehicle emergency traffic trussel that comes down on this side. The pedestrian trussel comes up in curves. Now that we're going to move here over to this side, the skywalk will just essentially invert or flip, and this transportation corridor with emergency vehicles comes down here off of the Seawalk, that's off of the corner, the west corner of the building. So very good question, but we're trying to separate the pedestrian traffic from the vehicular traffic or emergency vehicles that might need to come down.
Okay, Mr. Richardson, now you've confused me. You said, does this picture not reflect your current design? I mean, the ship is on the left, so are you saying you're going to move the ship somewhere else?
I'll show in a later slide where we have moved. This is a recent change to us, meaning this is news that we just got in the last week, that the Coast Guard is, will not participate in this side of the dock as it's shown here. So we will have a single berth which flips over to this side. We're basically inverting or mirroring the design. And we'll show, and I have a slide later that shows where that positioning of.
Okay, so this slide is incorrect. The ship is not here.
This is not, yeah, we wanted to show this just so you could get a sense of the design, because the design element is the same, but you're correct that the ship will actually slide across the front of the lot to the opposite side of the west side.
It will be perpendicular to that picture? Or just moved over some feet? Moved over a few feet?
It'll, yeah, it'll be moved over, it'll be moved over a few feet to the flag, the width of the ship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, next slide. So this gives you a perspective of what you'll be looking at when you come up that curved trussel. Once again, you can see that the vantage point from above, the Seawalk down below. Also, from this image, you'll also see, as we like to say, curating, moving that pedestrian traffic up top. You'll see that this is Whittier. This is where our bus traffic and vehicle traffic comes in separate from our pedestrians. Go ahead and move forward. One of the things we took some learnings from was we had Tracy, who was on the waterfront, and. And it wasn't just about the restaurant experience. You'll see that we have uh re- restaurant food and beverage down here below. Also, with the intent was to carry that food and beverage up to have uh not only uh, an outdoor facility on this lower level on what we call the flag or out on the seawalk, but also to have higher end year-round restaurants up top, taking advantage of those upper views. But one of the learnings we had from Tracy being down on the water was the feedback from visitors and locals that the community events that were being held were just as important. And so when we looked at the design, we thought, how do we carry forward those same community events? But to build a little bit more of a purpose-built destination around community events. Go ahead and go forward. So to do that, we wanted to incorporate uh the NCL plan had a large uh one acre park plan. So we said, how do we do that? How do we create a park expanse, but also to include those community type events that Tracy was holding down on the waterfront and continue that. So we proposed a park that had a stage built into it was plumbed for power and sound. You'll see on this slide, on the very right, you can see some tables gathering with support, having food trucks, mobile exhibits that would come, maybe art uh displays that would be from time to time. But also is very natural. It leads from Eagan on this very lower right-hand corner and continues all the way up to that forty-five foot level view. And you can see we have greenery as well. Um, and hopefully, as you see here too, we have lights and children, and it's a place where the community continue continue to meet. Go ahead and next slide, please. Thank you. So to give us a di- a little different perspective, that uh current ground level, as we're looking at the gravel lot now is essentially at that twenty-five foot grade. You'll see the seawalk here. And then on the inside, we have split this ground parking into two sections. We have one hundred car spaces, which falls in the very front, which has its own separate entrance, a bus entrance here, which has currently twenty-four spaces plus the circulator space. And then we move up to the the forty-five foot level, and there's that park, the high high side, the the skywalk concept. And then restaurant, retail, entertainment space. And then sloping down the park. And then, as you can see here, this is the roof level with some opportunity there. Uh, complete coverage for for uh bad weather, and then, of course, the flex space at the very, very top here.
Mister Richardson, can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
The since there's so many levels, I'm just trying to make sure I understand. Do the people who are coming off the ship, the way you've designed it now, have to walk on the skybridge into your retail? Or can, or do they go somewhere else to get to the bus? How do they get to the bus?
Um, so they come off the skybridge. They are not forced to the retail. We have these corridors. So they don't necessarily have to go through a building. They have these quarters that flow down. These little gray boxes that you see here in the design are the escalators. And the escalators come down the the landing. There are also uh elevators on either side of that forty-five foot level, as well as access back down from this corner side. You can see a stairwell here that can allows you to connect down to the the seawalk.
Okay, so people, when they walk off the ship, have an option of walking up the skybridge if they want to see it, or they can take an elevator or a escalator to the bus. Is that?
Yes, so when they come up, they will come off the ship from sea level up to the forty-five foot level and then be presented with a series of of choices. Like if I'm going to go on tour, I'll go down the bus. If I want to access the seawalk, I can either go down the escalator staircase or take take the elevator down.
So everybody has to walk on the little S curve, and once they get to the top, they can go wherever they want.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
So as we uh set forth in this concept, one of the things we wanted to do was to figure out you know, how do we create a platform for whatever the future and options that would come on the site? And so we set out to design the corner of Eagan and Whittier. Uh, we we felt like this is a really a great space for having uh kind of like an international bistro where you have a cafe with coffee, you know, maybe some higher-end wines, meats, places you'd come to get lunch. Could have access to the park, but we kind of have this little corner on the front in Eagan. And then knowing that in the future, uh, future phases, we would have this as the pedestal, one of the easiest places to really build out in Juneau. But as we sit here today, we didn't know what that future was as we started the conversation. So we wanted to create the opportunity for growth on the space and and how we could do that. Now, we uh, as Russell said, I'm a very creative person. So we thought, well, how how could this space look? And we can create some options. So we thought we'd share that with you. But once again, we really were interested in seeing where the community felt as we began this process and and led forward into just building the the pedestal, if you will, for the future. If you go ahead and click forward one slide. So just hearing what we had in town, we we came up with three different concepts so that we can see how it might look. Uh, but you'll see that right now, the the pedestal or that first level at just blends into the park. So in our first phase, what we're doing is just taking that that base level, and it's just the roof of it is the extension of the park in phase phase one. So go ahead and click forward, and we'll just click really quickly, just so we can see kind of like, for example, this is if we go with the Ocean Museum Cultural Center concept, what it might look like and how it might differ. But you can see how it blends naturally into the park. Click forward one more. Um, this is if we had a a conference performance center, a a little different design, but once again uh blending itself back into the park. And then finally, if there was a a housing, if that was what the committee was looking for, then we have that uh as available as well on that front Eagan and Whittier corner.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so in the first phase, when there's nothing on on top, well, I guess wh- what's on top before the second phase is installed?
Yeah, so thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Question, the uh, the top of that, like I said, is a like a concrete base that blends into the park. So we would just uh add essentially an extension of the park. So more greenery, uh, more place for people to eat and sit and enjoy enjoy the space.
Good. Anybody else want to stop? Okay, go ahead. Madam Mayor has one. Go ahead.
How much time are you predicting between the phases?
Well, our goal is to uh, as we see here, phase one is the the goal is for us to uh complete phase one by twenty twenty-five is is our May of twenty twenty-five. And uh, we'll move forward rather quickly with what we consider phase two. Um, and really, it's going to be based on what the needs uh and desires of the community and how fast that space, you know, that phase three. Because we have thirty, um, I don't know if you can click forward, one one space forward. You'll see that we have thirty thirty thousand square feet on this that is isolated as as phase three, but we also have an additional thirty-five thousand square feet here um, which could also be uh added as additional flex space, depending on what the demand uh of the community is going to be. So um, at this point, we're not uh the developers, really. We may not be the developers of whatever that future space, but like I said, we wanted to build a pedestal, which would include, you know, the the corridor for uh water sewer power, um, the easiest place to develop. So um, we don't know what the timeline is at this point, based on uh the interest that we get from through this public process.
Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so, just to clarify, because you jumped to phase three, and this is helpful having this slide. So twenty twenty-five would be to get phase one and the pedestal and park and everything.
Yeah, so if we go back one slide, um. So I apologize, um, Chair, for jumping forward here, just to get to the the right slide for the question. But for phase one, you can see how that park blends in um, into the park for for that flex space in the thirty-five square foot. And what we're proposing for phase one is really this ten thousand square feet in the on the center. And then looking, obviously, at this slice, we're not seeing what's in phase uh on the front of that thirty-five and seafront level, but the the goal is to develop that all out a- as part of our our phase one. And then to add uh additional in in future phases.
Ms. Hale. This is probably a stupid question, but what are those round things? Are those trees?
Uh, there, some of them are trees, yes. Uh, Madam Chair, you hear this. Uh, some of them uh represent green space here, but also one of the things we wanted to do in the design was to do a concrete pattern that also blends itself into art, and it and this doesn't quite do it, but the idea was that if you flew over the building, that also would tell the story of Aukuan people as well. So there'll be a pattern that's uh in the park as you move up, and also some of these circles uh like here, that's where the the stage is. So it's a place that we slope down to Eagan, but it's also level. So those are some level areas in the park.
Okay, thanks. So this is while you have this s- phase up, um, this is what the top is this at grade level? If you're walking on Eagan Drive, do you walk right into this? How do you get up to this? And where are the buses again underneath here somewhere?
Yes, so um, this is essentially the covering. It starts on the high side at forty-five and then slopes to Eagan at eight. We have an elevation slide here later, but essentially slopes at about a three percent grade. Um, from the back end of the building or this tan space, it slopes then down down to Eagan. There is access with a walkway here to the corner and a walkway back uh towards uh the west side of link. It is approximately, if you were driving down Eagan, roughly from where the the sidewalk is here, which is on grade to this first edge of the circle, roughly about eight feet of grade. Um, and then everything else is below that.
So if you're walking on the sidewalk, just walking along, you could walk up to there from Eagan? Is that correct?
Yes, the the idea is we would have greenery along this space. And then you would have, if you wanted to approach into the park, you could just come up this sidewalk from the west side or this sidewalk from the east side uh that has the the greenery and trees that make that a very natural transition.
Got it. Thank you. Uh, Madam Mayor.
Um, and this might be the time to ask this question. I'll ask the hard question because I know it's what the public is interested in. So right now, phase one is retail in a dock. How do we ensure that phase two and phase three will occur? And how do we ensure that phase one is year round?
Yeah, so phase one that we have is really a a welcome center, uh, which is this this ten thousand square feet and uh restaurant retail s- space, right? Um, our our goal, as we stated in the beginning, is to be a year-round facility, right? And it and it that's not an easy challenge that we we take lightly. So meaning that we will have to attract the right businesses and curate the space into a year-round facility. So um, we are uh focused on how to do that. And that's part of this public process, is to make sure that we're engaging with the community and delivering the the retail restaurant experiences that will make this into a year-round facility, and then to support it with things like the parking structure that attract businesses to the space, attract people to want to come there year-round. Um, and also to have a committed to uh an activity schedule that brings people into the space throughout the season.
All right, keep going. We'll stop you again.
Okay. So as you can see, uh, all of this is conceptual preliminary as far as we know, we uh, the spaces, as we talked about, you can see the escalators down there. This all these elements are are permanent. How we end up, uh, you can see here the the covering. Um, and you can see this is the new flow of the the ship getting moved, as the earlier question was about moving this the skywalk to the opposite side, how it curves and connects to the building, leaving that outside space the same, and the seawalk that connects back up to the park on the west corner. And go ahead and go to the next slide. Um. Let's, let's go ahead and go forward one. So here's that elevated view. You can see there's Eagan uh road sidewalk on Eagan. That gradual slope that gets us gains us up the other eight feet. One of the challenges we have is, of course, we have that tidal zone. The great amount of pressure that's being created by the water, how do we do this in a a reasonable way and cost-effective way? The way this is engineered is to stay at grade, so the where the gravel is right now, that twenty-five foot level on the car level, and then slope back into Eagan so that we can make that park blend into the street street level. And this gives us this underground parking experience or feel uh without having to go down below the tidal zone, except for away from the away from the water where the tide comes in. And you'll also see there's that park level with the trees. Uh, once again, we're maintaining the height level that's clarified by the by the zoning up top. And you can also see where the sea dock level is and the sky, the sky uh, skywalk coming in. Go ahead. So as I mentioned, we had that uh last minute change that occurred last week was this moving of uh the the dock position from the Coast Guard side west to the flag. Um, we have included this uh a little bit larger, what we'd consider this tidal zone here to not just only reflect the ship, but also the shadow of the ship. Um, once again, that's the waterfront property. This is what's considered uh I I found out today is actually called the seagull dock. I didn't know that. I thought it was the AMP dock, but this is a referred to as a seagull dock, so that we're not encroaching on future development for the the Coast Guard and also steering clear of the tidelands um that are connected to the seagull dock.
Mister Richardson, can I ask you about what happened with the Coast Guard? Um, they seem to be in and
Yeah, Madam Chair. Um. You know, th- those conversations had been ongoing for quite some time um with lower levels, lower level folks um in Washington. They took it up to their commandants. Uh, the Coast Guard is going through what they call kind of a revitalization effort. Um, you're looking at things like the icebreaker, some additional vessels um that they're looking at bringing to Alaska. They wanted to maintain their flexibility and not get tied into any particular development. Basically what they told us.
Yeah, I know the icebreaker doesn't fit at the current Coast Guard dock, so it seems like your dock would be ideal for them, not the other way.
Yeah, I can't speak for the Coast Guard, Madam Chair.
Right, I understand. Uh, Mister Bryson.
Uh, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Uh, just while we have a break in the action, uh, you you showed pictures of cars and buses. Um, what is the plan for EVs and charging stations, e-buses and dock electrification? How much power are you going to bring to this place?
If you go ahead, we can click forward to the next slide. I think we can see that downstairs. There we go. Um. Obviously, in our our plan, we wanted to make sure that we accommodated for for uh charging stations, buses. Um, we had facility, uh, additional facility space. Part of that car ramp gives us that on this front side, um, and having those spaces as part of our plan. Um, you'll also see here in our plan too, is that uh, as Alex mentioned in the earlier meeting about the circulator as well. Um, uh, as long, uh, we wanted to support the this extension of the the waterfront into a a single transportation uh mode, because we felt like not just turning left would help reduce traffic flow, but supporting that circulator as well, one, a single vehicle use. Um, and how we integrate with that, uh, where guests can easily move and connect to to this waterfront property using that. We think would also is a great uh reduction of emissions as well, and also connect with the downtown. Um, I I thought I would share a um, additional question?
Oh, yeah, I was just thought that what about the dock electrification, about the electrified plugging the cruise ship in, not just the buses?
Yes, and uh, thank you again for the the question, Madam Chair. It is a very difficult uh s- subject or topic, because one, uh, having enough power to support additional cruise ships. So what we wanted to do was to essentially plummet, if you will, for shore power, knowing, uh, figuring out how we'll resolve plugging that into the the system. But we wanted to be ready when shore power was ready, was our strategy, knowing that it's a very difficult challenge right now uh with availability, available power within the city.
Thanks. Madam Mayor has a question. And Ms. Hale, then next.
Yes, thank you for considering dock electrification. So looking at this slide where it says seawalk, is that where you anticipate um, going in with our seawalk? Going up with our seawalk?
Yeah, so uh, we, of course, want to connect with the seawalk. Um, there have been multiple seawalk plans, but we wanted to include that right here. Uh, what we're showing is a twenty twenty-foot seawalk that runs along this front section, flags out. Uh, we have built within our plan uh ten thousand square feet essentially from this corner and around ten thousand square feet of additional seawalk. And so uh, we are, our plan is to connect with, you know, whether that comes from Heat Street or whether that comes from from Eagan to connect it around the the front of the building. And even with the the Coast Guard, there is still that easement that is here that allows us to support the seawalk in front of our in front of our building along the tidelands.
Um, Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you're talking about the circulator and this uh uh, this dock is is away from sort of what we consider sort of the core of downtown. Are you, are you saying that you'll have a circulator to bring people into the downtown? Or what 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 is that circulator that you're talking about? What will it be circulating? Or what, what, what is that circulator that you're talking about? What will it be circulating?
Yeah, so at, at this point, uh, we haven't proposed to, to operate this, the circulator. We know that that's been a, a topic that's been developed uh around moving guests through the downtown. We wanted to be able to support that plan within our design. Um, if it does come, you know, uh, that we're moving guests um and figuring out how to move guests, but the, the, our, our idea is to make sure that we have a way that guests can easily move from our space out as guests to leave out on tour, so we make that process simple. Whether they're walking, we want to make sure that we're connecting the seawalk so that they easily can connect to the downtown. Or also going to the west, which is to the, the uh Well statue as well. We wanted to make that easy. But the idea is to make it as easy as possible for guests to move throughout the site, throughout our facility, and then also curating that traffic into the downtown and other places they might like to visit.
Go ahead, Madam Hale, Ms. Hale.
I, I uh forgive me if I, if I don't quite understand, but um, when you have with circulator, are you saying that if there was a circulator bus, for example, it could take advantage? Or you, you, this will be designed so that it would work with a circulator?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, it, it is designed to, to work with the circulator. Having a dedicated space for that vehicle, uh, transportation vehicle to come in and easily out of the, out of the port area.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Madam Deputy Mayor, thank you, gentlemen. Um, on, following up on the seawalk, you mentioned it going in front of the property. Would it connect on the, I guess, the west side or the bottom of the picture? Is it going to wrap around and connect?
Yeah, so uh, thank you, Madam, Madam Chair. Uh, question is around this corner, what we call, I, I know it's very confusing. I always call it the, the north corner, but it's not like this nor, this northwest corner. But the current uh drawing that you see here is to move guests in from the seawalk and then connect them up to the park. So they would connect up into the park and then allow them to then come down uh Eagan if they were going to continue west. Uh, down, down Eagan.
Uh, thank you for that. On s- same drawing now, I guess, on the top side, the northeast corner. It, there's the, i- is that retail? Is that phase one?
Yes, this, this area that you're seeing here, which is uh spans between what we would consider the base of ground level, twenty-five foot level, and then up into the thirty-five foot level is part of our phase one.
And sorry, actually, I was talking about the other retail on the top of this.
Oh, yes, yes, this is the, on the corner of Eagan and Whittier.
Okay, and that is phase one.
That, that is also phase one development, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Madam Chair. If I could go back just one slide real quickly to just point out, one, one of the things that we want to, to realize is that as a year-round facility, there'll be events and activities happening here. And it makes a lot more sense. We can double the number of spaces available here. Uh, moving this from just a hundred car spaces, not quite double, but one and a half times by striping our bus lanes and uh accommodating for more vehicles uh through the, the closer off-seasons uh for those that are going to be coming to visit the space and, and restaurants and retail and events that are happening during the off-season. Go ahead and go, go forward in this uh, just very technical once again, uh, just showing what that looks like. Uh, we have right now twenty-three bus p- spaces plus the circulator built into the plan. And o- one of the things I would point out, showing uh these two slides in particular, is that we don't really know what the future build-out is, but we want it to be at the maximum. So no matter what came there, uh, we had a, a accommodated for that uh within the parking space and also all the other code requirements that would be required, whether you built, you know, housing or an, an entertainment complex that would go into, into those additional flex spaces. We wanted to make sure that we accommodated for all of that in the initial design and initial build-out.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in the Icy Straight Point facility, um, are there community of HUNA events that occur in that facility?
Madam Chair, uh, thank you again for the question. And yes, I, that is correct. Uh, you know, we've always felt the, the cannery was always the hub of our community. And that was one reason that HUNA told them purchase that is because whether it was a wedding or a funeral, um, a, a celebration, that was the place that the community would come. And uh, to that, to this day, that's where the community comes and events are held. And our activity center is, is a, a core space that gets used throughout the year by the community as well as also where we host our shareholder meetings and other public events.
That's super, thank you.
Madam Chair, and if I might, just to clarify, in the off-season, a little more challenging for us in the off-season in a rural community, you're paying very high energy costs, so we typically don't have it open during the off-season in the winter.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, since you brought up energy costs, how are you going to heat this facility? Are you going to take advantage of any geothermal technology or how are you going to do that?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question as I lean over looking at Corey, how we um and.
And if you'd identify yourself, please.
Sure, so I'm Corey Wall at Jensen Normal Wall Architects. So um, you know, at this point, a lot of this is still conceptual, but I think we realize that there will be a fair amount of energy use on the site. You know, with it being year-round as it is, we have a lot of surface area that we need to keep free of snow and.
Mr. Wall, there's a chair, but behind you now.
Oh, thank you.
Magic.
And so we can make the buildings very energy efficient, but then we also have a lot of site that we're going to have to keep free of snow, which maybe means snow melt systems. And so we've been exploring ideas. There's a lot of opportunity, whether it's ground source or even seawater sourced heat or air sourced heat pumps that could happen on the site. But I think we're very aware that both the, the buildings are going to need to be very efficient and we're going to have to have an efficient way to uh generate energy on the site. So as we move forward, you know, the, of course, we're also excited about what's happening right across. What you're with the pro- possibility of Juno Hydro and uh community uh district heat happening here. So we want to be ready for that if that opportunity prevents itself in time to uh plug that in. So there's lots of things in the air, but we certainly, since they're going to be operating the facility, we know that it has to be energy efficient moving forward. And, and it'll be a, a major priority.
Mr. Richardson, do you have more to present? Are you, you, are you all in for questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, thank you again. I, I think we made it to the, the end of the deck. Um, but I appreciate all the questions and once again, we appreciate being here.
Okay, um, more questions from the assembly? Uh, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, I know Viewshed's something that's important to the community. Uh, the orientation of the ship, I mean, is that set? And then in, I guess, slide seven, I think it kind of shows a orientation. Is that? Is that a current drawing or is that a a past drawing?
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the, the drawing I think that you're referring to is the one, uh, this is past. If we can go forward to the one that shows uh our sitting, the angle, as we move to the west side, one of the things that we look to try to, to mimic, uh, there are two, two main goals. One is uh recognizing the Coast Guard and what their needs are uh to that e- east side. And then also, um, yeah, I think, no, I think, I think it's a few more forward. Yep, the other way. Yep.
This was something I was like.
Okay. There it goes, back, there it is. Um, so our, our current, our current plan uh as the, the Coast Guard is, as you can see there, Doc. Uh, our plan as we move forward this last week was to figure out the best way to uh accommodate for the needs of the Coast Guard and not encroach on their space. And then also as we looked at this and, and the Viewshed, uh, this particular angle, now that we didn't have the Coast Guard was kind of selected because that was the angle, if you remember, the ships throughout the season was kind of, was kind of taking, was this, this particular angle. Um, it blend, blend nicely in, into the building and also allowed us to maintain a lot more of our waterfront uh seawalk space as well. But this is the, the, the position that we proposed um right now.
Uh, go ahead.
And then, so i- is that what's shown? And Madam Clerk, I think it's like slide five or something where you can actually see the ship looking down the channel.
Yeah, yes. So, so, Madam Chair, the, the view here is very similar to what you would have. It's just that we're going to invert uh the skywalk and the dock position. So the ship is moving slightly more to the west, but not that far. But this is kind of a, a re- rendering of what it would look like with a ship there faced in as it would pull directly into, into the dock.
So ship in basically the same place, but see walkway on the other side.
E- exactly. It's just a little bit west. We're shifting the ship a little bit west.
Okay, one logita, then Madam Mayor and then Ms. uh Hale.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, but since the Coast Guard isn't going to be using the other side of that dock, what do you have plans for on the other side?
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, it's great, great question. Um, and actually it saved us a quick, great deal of money as well to cut the Ghost Guard because structurally it requires, you know, smaller piling. But also one of the things that allowed us to do was to offer like a small boat load, loading similar to what we have in, in HUNA so that we can access and service tour um without having to add another bus to the road. So the idea is to, to add small boat loading to that reverse side that would have been the Coast Guard side. But it allows us to reduce the size of the float and also reduce the piles, saves considerably about a, a deal of money in the, in the actual build-out.
So safe to say canoes could probably land there.
Um, Madam Mayor, Ms. Hale, then Ms. Hughes-Candies.
Yeah, I want to see you paddling those canoes while I'll get off. Um, that was kind of my question too, because as we know that we are trying to limit to five ships uh a day instead of uh six, which the other side would be. So um, my question is on that one picture, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk. Um, it shows the box, the rectangular, um, and I'm probably looking at our port director. Are we, is that uh configuration blocking anything that we might be interested in doing on the other side of the property? Cause I've seen plans for that too.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Porter, Mr. Porter, there you go.
I've only seen it just today, so I don't, I don't know how it's going to impact uh the Coast Guard plans or our plans. Captain, the Coast Guard captain of the port also would have to approve this uh, this um plan and submit to ensure that it doesn't uh impede uh transit through Gasto Channel. But uh, I'm not prepared to um provide a opinion at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Looking into it. Mr. Watt has a comment.
Uh, Deputy Mayor, thank you. So uh, I think everybody knows that the municipal docks, uh, you know, are by line sixteen B, right? Cause it was version sixteen
B.
Of the number of dock alignments that the port director looked at. And, and really what happens is the Coast Guard, the marine pilots, the cruise ship companies um, all look at that and they look at the, they got navigability of a vessel uh to figure out what's safe um, and, and doable. And there's a lot of factors. Uh, they're looking at wind and weather and current uh and weather ship movements for uh other ships are, are being impeded. The Coast Guard will be thinking about their own interests. Uh, so, so if this is version one, um, I, I doubt it's the, our version two. I, I doubt it's the final one.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Watt. I appreciate that. A lot of this plan is obviously a lot of gray boxes that are not filled in. So this is to me a high level. You're going to get a whole lot more detailed and I, when, as you go through the public process and planning commission and everything. So did I, did you get? You, you're done, Madam Mayor? Ms. Hale, do you have yours?
Yeah.
So then Ms. Hughes-Candies and then Ms. Wall.
Given that interesting history of sixteen B, uh, thank you. Uh, this question might be somewhat moot. But uh I, I think Norwegian has been anchoring their ships in a configuration. In my mind, when I drive into town, it, it looks like they're anchoring, they've been anchoring their ships this year in a configuration similar to where it might line up when they are docked. So I don't know if that's the case, but that's what I was kind of figuring. So when I'm looking at this, and, and what that appeared driving into town is that you're not seeing the broadside of the ship. You're seeing the bow of the ship. And it's a big ship still. It takes up a lot of room. Um, and so is this, but, but given that we might end up at sixteen or thirty-five B or whatever, is, is this configuration similar to what I'm talking about having seen this summer?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Ms. Madam Chair. Um, this, this was our goal essentially is to do that a- alignment. Um, which allows you to still maintain the view, um, whether the ship is in port or where the ship uh is there, not there, is to have that view as you come down Eagan. Um, and as you mentioned, a lot of the ships have been parked in that position, uh, not by design. I just think that that's the ideal anchor spot, right? And so that's where we've seen them throughout the summer season here in Juneau.
Uh, Ms. Hughes-Candies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. Um, while we're talking about the alignment, and I didn't know that about sixteen B, that is my new favorite fact. Um, we, during the VITF process, we talked a lot about um, the ship that's in the middle. Uh, when we have those bonus ships are considered uh it, as far as the Coast Guard is considered, um, we don't really have jurisdiction over that if they're using the dynamic positioning or whatever to stay in place. So this very early configuration, did you give thought? Do you feel like this is blocking a ship from doing that, knowing there's a lot of channel? But the, the area over there, did you consider that at all?
Mr. Richardson.
That's a weird question. I apologize.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, one, once again, uh, w- we didn't consider whether we were trying to block the traffic that's really a coast guard, you know, uh, cause they, they manage that. Um, however, we, we did have a, a great meeting with the Coast Guard today because we, we want to be good neighbors to the Coast Guard and, and how we, how we work our seawalk and all that. So um, I, I think that uh, you know, that they can weigh in on whether that positioning blocks, but obviously it will go through their review process.
Okay, so, go ahead. Um, in terms of uh, you talked about phase one being this kind of platform for, it could go many different directions depending on the needs of the community or the desires. When uh Norwegian was going through this process, they had several public meetings already. And I'm sure you saw some of the outcomes of those and different things that made it into their list. Do you have intentions to conduct um, public outreach of your own? And if so, what would that look like? Um, do you, or do you plan to build on nor- bits of Norwegians? And if so, what does that look like? So kind of two-parter. Thanks.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, so we obviously paid attention as well through that development process. And through the planning and zoning, there'll be a, a series of official meetings that will happen on, on behalf of the city. But also starting this week on, on Thursday, we'll be hosting with the Chamber, which is informal, but also allows us to get feedback and input for, for this design um and, and our thoughts and take public feedback. And as I said, not a formal process, but we're, we're eager to engage as we are now, uh, property owners, developers and excited for this process to begin.
Press the button. Uh, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the same question as Ms. Hughes-Candies and I'll take the opportunity to say the more informal public opportunities early in the process, probably um, the better. We love it when a lot of people show up to our meetings and same with the chamber, but definitely not the full breadth of the community. Thanks.
Uh, Madam Mayor.
I think this is my last question. To Joe.
Um, um, Ms. Trem, after I'm at a mayor, then you're up.
Um. Probably similar to those is I would rather see some actual meetings just for the public. And something you might consider is First Friday is coming up in December. If you had an open house somewhere, that might be a good place. And I'm sure Ms. Moore, who's not in your hair, head could certainly help you with that.
Um, Ms. Trem.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, also fun, was excited to learn that sixteen B fact, uh, who knew? I am curious how different designs. how different design sixteen B was from one A, although I'm sure that can't tell us exactly what's going to happen in this process. But my question is, since Mr. Smith brought up the view shed, if there's any appetite to apply for a zoning change on the slot to change the height restriction, particularly if the project might be housing or I'll plug again a hotel.
Richardson.
Thank you. And as we alluded to in the number five on our our methodology was no pixie dust. So we haven't at this point are not seeking any changes to the current zoning to in the current plan. So and we appreciate the feedback about the hotel.
I would add, I'm the housing person. I would like to see housing there. Basically, year round, you will go through some detailed review by the planning commission and they will scrutinize which way your buses are turning and how many lanes you have and and how wide they are and all of those very important things and whether it all comports with zoning. The assemblies charge, however, is to, when you come and ask for a Thailand lease, is to decide whether the overall development is good. Good enough for the community or not. So those won't, those are not really technical things. For me, it will be about guaranteed year round vitality. And right now, your phase one is pretty empty. It says retail. I don't know what it is. I don't know. I'm not convinced it's year round. Housing would make it year round and just saying the more you can guarantee those things, the more likely you are going to satisfy the assembly's concern about is the development better or worse for the community. You know that there are people that do not want a fifth dock here. And a lot of people do, but you know, it's just a balancing act. There was nine of us. We have input from all kinds of people all the time. And just overall, that's our mission as opposed to the planning commission, who's going to really dive into the details about your turning radius and things like that, which we don't know anything about. So and you know, for me, housing is year round and it will be guaranteed year round, whether the restaurant might open and might close. The store might open or close. Anyway, but you've heard this before, but Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had another question that is kind of vague in nature, so we'll see where it goes. We'll see what comes out and we'll see what you do with it. We I asked about the clarified the timing for phase one would be estimated completion with twenty twenty five. That's based off of getting going as fast as you can. Is that your intention? Am I right in assuming that is your intention?
Yeah, man. Obviously, there's lots of moving parts, right? So we've we've set a goal out there and Hona Totem is traditionally very, very aggressive and trying to get things done. And so we're prepared to, you know, move through that first phase if everyone is is excited about what we've proposed. So.
Okay.
You know, thank Madam Chair, if I might add as well, you know, some of this comes down to financing and what have you, but our expectation is that phase two that you saw on that would be finished pretty close to the completion of phase one. Well, so we may be looking at twenty twenty six for phase two, but it'd be done pretty close to the completion of phase one.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Dick or Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Just because you have it on your slide, you said number four was meeting NCLH, Community Commitments. What are, what did you mean? What do you mean by that specifically?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Thanks for the question. Yeah, so what we did is we looked at just the, as I said, what was said in the public space about like, for example, the park. Having having some form of underground parking, supporting the seawalk. All those things that we tried to look at and consider in our design, knowing that also we need to look kind of realistically at the timeframe costs. One of my new favorite phrases is value engineer, which is to take all the goodness out of it and just make it work with a cost guidelines. So the actually the changing of the way the parking structure is is one of the outcomes of that, but but still supporting that commitment of having a form of underground parking. So we tried to look at everything that we could do and was possible within the two point nine acres. And then also to support within the flex space, additional opportunities that had been talked about within the community and support that through building a platform for easy development on the lot itself.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess the the corollary to that question, what what things that were on that NCL's list? Have you kind of decided probably aren't going to be a good, good fit?
Well, I thank you. Thank you again, Madam Chair. I would say at this point, once again, we're we're early in that in this process, right? So we're doing all we can to accommodate everything we can in the two point nine acres and trying to do that. You know, in a realistic fashion based on the time.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think, and I mentioned earlier on, we can't be all things on that property. It's only two point nine acres. We committed an acre that to a park, a green space. So you're really looking at that flex space and what do you do with it? Is it housing? Is it some type of science cultural center? Is it a performance center? I mean, that's really the the challenge that that we're faced with today.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah, Lida, one more statement. So we appreciate the nod to the public outreach of NCL, but remember that's their public outreach. You have a little bit different design, just friendly reminder of that. And we'd also appreciate your nod towards the VITF recommendation. So I'm sure Mrs. Ms. Pierce, sorry, can certainly help you with that. But I think both of those would be really good places to start.
I asked you about the Coast Guard being in or out. And the other thing, what about the Ocean Center? What's happening there?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a couple of meetings I met with, certainly with Bob Janes. When the transfer of the property happened, met with Paul Volkers as well. I've met with, I believe he's the chair of the board, Joe Nelson, just to talk about the development and our design. And what accommodations we could make again, as Mickey alluded to, where that that phase three, that flex space needs to be determined through this community process. We don't have the space to provide everything. So whether it's housing or an ocean center, right? I mean, that's that's what we're going to have to, we're going to have to wrestle with. I was pretty open about it. I love the idea of of an ocean center that's tied into a cultural center so that you're integrating the two things. And I know there's been a lot of conversations with like the Alaska Heritage Institute and trying to pull that together as well. So it's it's not a yes, it's not a no, but we're working through it.
I just wondered where everybody is. More questions? Any questions from anybody over here? Mr. Barr, no. Thank you for coming. Thank you for showing your us your boxes and we look forward to hearing more and I hope like I will just echo Madam Mayor's, thank you. You know, you've got to start talking to the community more, probably.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Sure. We'll take a ten minute break. Okay, we will call the committee, the whole meeting back to order. Are the clerks good? We got you on it. Okay, thank you. So the next two topics are the idea, I think, for two is to ask our questions, see what's happening. We had some comments from an organization. Idea here, I think, would be to let this ordinance be introduced at the next assembly meeting, but then bring it back here and see what amendments people might want to have, because everybody just got that letter and it's too, it's kind of complicated. And the hazard mapping too is another one that probably will just give a high level direction and bring it back. Anyway, so Mr. Adam Gotchak, thank you so much for coming and telling us what you can about the ordinance twenty twenty two dash twenty one.
Thank you for having me, Madam Chair. May I proceed?
I think is your is your microphone on? I you might move closer to your mouth. There you go.
All right. So I'm prepared to do this either way you would like. I can kind of dive into a speech or I can answer any specific questions anybody might have. The speech will be very similar to the last one. As the changes are the same as the September twenty sixth cow packet.
Okay, let me ask people if they have questions and or if you want a presentation. Ms. Ms. Hale.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dr. Gotchak for being here. I was interested in in the substantive background section where you say notably taxpayers' burdens and the assessor's discretion derived from state law. I've heard a lot about the taxpayers' burden. And can you clarify a little bit more, maybe describe to us a little bit more how the state law describes that? Because I think a lot of people it actually one year when I thought, well, I think I should appeal this. And then I looked at the burden. I said, there's no way I could do that. So can you talk about what the state law says?
Mr. Gotchak.
Absolutely. Thank you to the chair. Yes, so the burden of proof does rest on the taxpayer or the appellant, and that is a function of state law. If it were an even match, you might have fourteen thousand tax appeals. So really in order to have a functioning assessment and assessor process, the discretion and the burden the discretion is with the assessor as far as methodology and the default is generally the assessors assessment. So the burden of proof does fall on the appellant to prove that there has been the error or improper evaluation or under valuation or excessive. And that it all comes from Alaska statute twenty nine forty five to ten B. So that that is a bit outside of what we're hoping to do with twenty two dash twenty one. Because that is substantive, whereas the proposed changes are really procedural.
Who has, Madam Mayor, did you have? Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're just, we're asking specific questions now.
Yes.
Okay. I had a question on the first amendment that you have a note on here. So it's section two CBJ C fifteen oh five oh four one.
Did you tell us what page of of anything it is?
I it's six of well, of fourteen or it's it's described on page twenty six. Page two of the memo, it's the first comment. I don't have where it actually is, but the the comment here says proposed change renders the Superior Court rather than the Assembly, the proper body to hear appeals regarding property exemptions. I'm assuming that that means, you know, we recently had a situation where an organization was thinking of appealing because they thought they should have an exemption. That didn't actually end up happening, but is that the type? And so that appeal, my understanding is that appeal would have come to the Assembly. This change would make it so that that type of exemption wouldn't come to the Assembly. My first question is, is that correct? And what is the rationale for for that change? And how has that showed up in recent proceedings? Yes.
Mr. Gotchak.
Yeah, through the chair. So yes, that is correct. That would be going directly to the Superior Court and generally appeals from administrative decisions do go directly to the Superior Court. So it's just a chance for that Bonnie to hear the appeal rather than the Assembly. I'm not sure on the exact numbers and Mr. Palmer may be able to help on that. But it just generally a Superior Court is very familiar with administrative appeals. So it's general body for them. And
Mr. Palmer.
Thank you. And I can help field the other half of that question. I think in my time, nine-ish years, we've had maybe three or four, depending on how you want to classify them. Exemption appeal, so not valuation appeal. So you know, everything that Board of Equalization looks at is generally valuation piece. This would be on the exemption side. So a couple that come to mind would be the Juneau One, Volunteers of America is one. And the second one is there was a handful of cases with seal trust that ultimately what, you know, the assemblies changed, the assemblies are different. So this is a good opportunity to have this discussion. One of the struggles that we have had in those appeals and and others, whether it's a glory hall from this most recent year or not, is exemption decisions are super nuanced legal determinations. And I recall discussions with the Assembly in the past that maybe the Assembly didn't want to be in that position to make those legal determinations and wanted a judge to make those determinations instead, to give the Assembly the ability to make legislative decisions if it if it chose to. So we have a, I'll call it an archaic provision in city code that currently provides that valuation appeals go to the Assembly. And this would change that provision to be I don't want to say more consistent with state law, but state law has changed since our provision was created in nineteen seventy nine to say that exemption appeals can go directly to Superior Court. And so it would make our code in tight alignment with that. But state state law does open the door that if the Assembly wants to hear valuation appeals, you can. Excuse me, exemption appeals, not valuation appeals. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Mr. Smith.
Just to be clear, this ordinance doesn't change the pathway for valuation appeals.
Correct. So valuation appeals go from the assessor to the Board of Equalization and then to Superior Court.
Yeah, thank you. On a different subject, the I think it's just because it was deleted and then added to a different section, but the the thirty day appeal period, that that isn't changing at all. It's from the time assessments are mailed, they people have thirty days from the date of mailing. I think maybe just in the past, there was a different term, but that that is the time the clock is still the same. With the chair. Yes, Mr. Smith, that is correct. I one change on the notice of appeals that is relevant and was made by the board when they reviewed this on September twentieth is that they wanted to provide an additional five minutes of oral argument or up to five minutes of oral argument for late filed appeals. Generally, those were just based on documents submitted. In this case, this provides an additional opportunity for those potential appellants to be heard before the board. But the thirty day notice of appeal, that is the same.
More questions? I have a question. Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm also curious about the how we're paying hundred dollars a meeting, I think, is what's in here. That's pretty different than kind of how we're compensating other boards and and the assembly. Is there a reason behind that structure?
Good chair. Thank you, Miss Paul. Yes, so that was based largely on the Anchorage model and they pay fifty dollars per member per session. We wanted to do a hundred dollars. Our sessions, there are fewer and they are quite extensive. I think Anchorage is are generally shorter. They're five minutes versus our fifteen per party, which is really just the floor. So it wanted to reflect that there is quite a bit of work that goes into this. The board members are reviewing hundreds of pages. And unlike certain boards or committees, the board is only generally meeting for a couple of months per year. So like the planning commission, I believe, is a couple hundred dollars per month and two meetings per year or two meetings per month. And this reflects that it's a relatively discreet period at which we have these Board of Equalization hearings.
I forgot to mention everyone that David Epstein of the board is on the line if anyone has questions for him. You have another one? Go ahead.
I quick follow up. Do we have?
Do we, have we done the estimate of of cost in a normal year and a crazy year?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe Mr. Smith asked this at the September twenty six Committee of the Whole. Last season for the twenty twenty one season, I think, is probably closer to a normal year. We had seven meetings, three members per meeting, you're looking at about twenty one hundred dollars. So I'd expect that to be similar to those going forward.
I have a question about. Page eight of four regarding line thirteen fourteen. The appellant must submit to the assessor's office all documentary evidence and briefing in their possession that the appellant believes. That's pretty vague, especially when the burden is on them. Can we be more specific, including things like the list of things? That's one of the things that. This letter from the chamber talks about provision of guidance for repellents. I'm not sure that's the exact right spot for that, but when I was looking for. That, yeah, if they're they're burdened and we say, just give us whatever you can, that's not very friendly. Can can we come up with a list?
Through the chair. I don't see any reason why we could not come up with a list and start enumerating some of those types of documents. Do want to keep in mind that it is difficult to be too specific, since we deal with so many different types of properties. Residential, commercial, vacant, a store. An exciting new retail store. But we can definitely put in a few. Different options like appraisals or anything like that.
Yeah, and I don't know, again, I'm not sure it's the right place or whatever, but or if it just refers to. Check with the assessor's office and they'll give you a list or we have three lists, one for these each kind of properties, I don't know, something.
Yep.
Oh, Mr. Palmer.
I can help on this one a little bit on page ten of the ordinance. Yes, if you go line, let's say seventeen eighteen-ish. So there's a long list in there of, I think, potential items that might. Help answer the question and might form the basis of a FAQ type of checklist for repellents. If they, you know, if the Assembly wants to direct the manager, AKA the finance director, to develop something like that or expand what we currently have.
And a mayor has a comment.
I was gonna say, I'd be happy to direct the.
I would be.
Finance director.
We don't get to do that, but. Okay, that's something, but that that was a specific thing that seemed doable in this from this letter. More questions, comments? Are you, Madam Mayor, did you want to make a motion and see if it passes?
Certainly. Ms. Madam Deputy Mayor, if Mr. Kachak has anything more to say, I don't know if he has anything more to add. Anyway, my motion will be to. Send this to the Assembly for introduction, but leave it to in the Committee of the Whole for further discussion.
And hopefully the Board of Equalization can take a look at these things or other things that we hear, other other input that we get between now and then, Ms. Hale.
Maybe a question to to Madam Mayor, we do have this. Letter from the Chamber Chamber and at what point are we planning on trying to address some of these items?
I've actually looked at some of them today and I liked a couple of them, one of them being the checklist. So if anybody's interested, they should probably meet with the attorney to draft in a minute. I'll be looking at a couple, which I can certainly share with the group when I'm done.
And now, right now, Ms. Hale, if you have things you want to say now to direct, you know, to ask about or say about. I would hope that the Board of Equalization could look at this, these comments too and see what they, if they have anything to say.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair or Madam Deputy Mayor. I I haven't really had a chance to sort of absorb all of this because I just got it. But I I just want to make sure, I guess my my question is. And maybe what I'll do is just offline consult with you, Madam Mayor, because I I don't want to. I don't want to, I don't want to double up on effort here, so. Thank you, I I do have one question, not necessarily about the letter, but just broadly. About the assessment process, I don't know if this would be appropriate now. It's been brought to my attention by various members of the public that. Some some assessor's office follow a prescribed. Procedure and process for their assessment process and apparently our assessor's office does not. Do we have any information about whether we should be following some kind of more prescribed process? Or something that's set up by some other entity? That's very broad, but.
Mr. Kachak.
Good chair, so unfortunately, because I represent the board, I don't have a lot of communication with the assessor. So my knowledge of their process is generally just from the filings that are with the record. And it looks like it is generally. A somewhat informal back and forth and that there's quite a back bit of back and forth between the assessors and the potential repellents or repellents. Where they just exchange information and then at some point the assessor prepares. Ten to twenty page report on their property that is submitted to the board. I guess I I'm not quite sure. What the standard process? That you're referring to, that you're aware of other assessors offices do.
I would, I could follow up on that question. Go ahead.
And I see Mr. I could too, and I see Mr. Manager.
You go ahead.
Has his hand up, but the question is not the process in an appeal, but the question is the process during the assessment. And and maybe Mr. Manager can speak to that.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, so I mean, I I think generally across the city, if somebody has. Thinks another community does something better, more efficient, you know, we're we would go all ears to that. I mean, we've got state statute guiding us and Mr. Roger certainly knows more about the internal workings of the assessor's office. So if a member of the public has a specific recommendation. You know, I think it's incumbent on us to entertain that, to see if that's a better way to do our business.
Good, thank you.
Okay, good. Okay, you heard Madam Mayor's motion, any objections? All right, thank you, thanks for coming, appreciate all the work on this. Okay. Mr. Rory Watt, is that you going to talk about hazard maps? Because we like to talk about that.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor, so so first in the packet is a memo that Director Kester compiled. Starting on packet page forty four, and I just really want to compliment. Everybody who responded to this emergency, certainly Director Kester who's here, Mr. Matisse and Emerg. Coordinator. People in the neighborhood, volunteers in the community, we had all kinds of people who pitched in, geologists showed up and assisted. Naturalists, DOT showed up with their drone, many, many people. Got together for this difficult problem. I know there have been private fundraisers to help the affected. Mr. Barr and I met with the three property owners on on Friday and I I went for a tour yesterday morning. And the three property owners, I think, are to be commended for. Really working together and staying together and trying to help each other figure out their way through their difficult processes with. Their financial issues and their insurance issues and whatnot. So I think for the first part of this, if anybody has questions about the actual event or the response. Director Kester can answer that. And then once we get through that, then we can talk to the hazard mapping component.
Okay, any questions about the? Director Kester's memo or the event or any follow up you want to ask about that, anybody? Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the rainfall intensity. Kind of chart that you showed, I guess, so that's just showing that there, those are days where we're getting more than one inch of rain total. Do you, have you seen anything that shows that, you know, we're getting more like that that one inch of rain falls in six hours versus? Anyway, is that, and I don't actually know how much that matters for my cup soils or. Anyway, does that, I don't know how much that affects. Hazard of flooding or anything, we've been.
Ms. Kester. Or Mr. Barr is raising his hand, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I dug up this particular graph. I've asked for that data, I I'm pretty confident that the Weather Service is is going to get back to me on that request. I specifically asked for hourly hourly rainfall data. Leading leading up to this particular event, but you know, it's it's something that that we're we're interested in. It's something that that particular data set is something that other other Southeast communities are looking at too. Predicting predicting land sizes is tricky, though. That's just one one data point upon many that that folks that folks look at when they're thinking about this. You you did interpret the chart correctly.
Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'm just curious, any kind of big lessons learned in terms of response?
Ms. Who's, what's that one? Ms. Kester.
Thank you, thank you for that question. I think there's always important lessons learned when responding to an event. So we certainly learned some things about just our internal communication. We learned some things about communicating with the Red Cross and sheltering. We took an opportunity actually last week to do some debriefing with the entire leadership team. And kind of thinking about how we can take the lessons learned from this event response and really help the entire team be prepared for future events. Because I I do think that we need to be prepared. And, you know, I've been here about two and a half years and about every year, something happens. Now, we've been very fortunate not to have any loss of life, but. There's always something to be learned and while I really commend staff and the community for their response. It's also a good opportunity to reflect, so I hope I answered your question.
Can I just piggyback on that one about the all hazards plan, did that actually work? And you did the thing it said there or? How did that go?
Thank you, Chair, I think you, are you referring to the emergency operations plan that dictates kind of how we respond to different, different disasters?
Yeah, Mr. Matisse has, you know, updates that plan and. Is that, is that, did that get hauled out or did you just start calling each other?
So we have, we do have an emergency operations plan that kind of dictates who does what. And. It it is always a good reference point, but you're right, in the midst of a response, it's more about kind of who shows up and who's available. And so that was was part of our feedback. The all hazards plan is more of a planning document that prepares, that's updated every five years, that prepares us to be available for different. Be able to respond to different incidents and I know that's in Tom Matisse's office, so I don't know if the manager's office wants to respond to that.
That's okay, that's good, you're good enough. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Director Kester. Part of the problem was that. The tree blocked the road and we had talked about talking with ALMP about extending Gasno Avenue, make it a through street. Which may or may not be gated, depending on what happens there, are we still working on that or have we hit an impasse?
It's Kester.
Thank you for that question, Mayor, well done. You know, I think that is something that certainly is on the table. What she's referring to is that there's a through ALMP property and an ALMP easement, there is an alternate access to Gasno Avenue. Right now, there's a private property owner who who kind of owns a key section of that. And I know the fire department has been in conversation with that private property owner. And I just, I just talked with the fire department, actually this weekend, about making sure that we. Continue that conversation in case we need access, so I can't tell you that it's been buttoned down, but I can tell you that we're still having those conversations.
Mr. Watt.
Somebody, some of you might remember when we rebuilt Castano Avenue, I think about two thousand and five, it was a giant project. And we negotiated with that property owner and the power company, we built a temporary access road. So that we could get people in and out when the road was under construction and we would have ambulance access and people with. Mobility issues would be able to get in and out, so we actually did it once. It's, it would be a big deal in terms of dollars to have a permanent public access. It is, it is possible. Be be a big deal, good topic for Public Works and Facilities to contemplate on whether. That should make the CIP list, whether that's something really where the the benefits outweigh the cost.
Thanks, more questions about this, ready to go on to the hazard memo, thank you for all you did and for the memo. And the nice pictures. Mr. Watt, I mean, the the upshot is the recommendation on page fifty, just this kind of high level. Policy, you know, and and in the end, will we agree to something like this, so, Mr. Watt?
Thank you, so so a uncharacteristically long memo from me. It's it's a, it's a big topic and and really we have. We need to update our code with regards to development restrictions in hazard zones. The the. Change to Title forty nine that will result has to go through the Planning Commission. So what we need from the Assembly, and we don't need it tonight, is a nod that the direction that I've kind of laid out in this memo. Is close enough to where, you know, we think we might end up. That the Planning Commission can start working on it or maybe some modification to that direction to the commission. We did talk about this some time ago. Where I suggested that we, we talked about, you know, a fifty or a hundred year horizon being. You know, like our our target for, you know, whether we're trying to regulate things that happened. No more frequently than fifty or a hundred years. I thought that was going to be sufficiently specific for staff and the commission, it's really not. So hence the the lengthy memo to try and point us, try and point them in a good direction. When the commission starts working on this, CDD staff with Mr. Palmer will work on a draft ordinance. The commission will work on it in committee, they'll hold public hearings, there'll be neighborhood meetings, there'll be a lot of public process. Before it comes back to the Assembly and then you'll have more public process. So really, we're just kind of starting that that process. We'll have this again on the Cow on November twenty eighth, Agenda Room willing. So I would ask of you to read this, digest it, read a bunch of the links that are are available on the CDD webpage. And and kind of be ready on the twenty eighth to engage in that conversation about, does this seem like the first right step? If the clerk can bring up in the packet, there was a PowerPoint slideshow, there's a couple. Things that I think are are worth talking about a little bit. The first is our mining history. So I have, I personally have tried to be a student of our municipal history. Including our mining history, there there are many really interesting hooks. So so in this, this is a photo from. Nineteen twenty one. Anywhere there is good. And look, this is looking at Gasno Avenue. The recent event is to the left of the screen, so in in this photo in nineteen twenty one, there was a slide. There was threatened litigation against the mine. If you look high in the hillside, you can see a structure which is a portal structure and a railroad. So the mine built a railroad side hill above town. And to make room for the railroad, they took waste rock and they just dumped it over the side until they had a flat area for the railroad. Bad practice for steep slope management. They also had water management issues, they had water coming out of the mining tunnel. And during a storm event, they lost control and that slide on the the left oval, that nineteen twenty slide, you can see buildings that have been displaced. In my opinion, conclusively linked to the mine by the evidence and the litigation. And you could also see that Gasno Avenue at that time was a timber boardwalk on piling, much like on the waterfront. In that photo, just behind the the clerk's. In that photo, uh, just behind the, the clerk's, uh, uh, face. There's an arrow, there are two homes that are still there. The, the 265 and something else, uh, they're, they're still there. The, the old abandoned concrete foundation, um, still there. Uh, quite a few, quite a few structures from that era, uh, still there. And you can also see that the hillside was locked. Uh, so in the early days, they cut down all the trees for firewood and building materials. Not a good practice for steep slope management again. The next slide, if we can just scroll a bit. This is the 1936 slide. This had loss of life. Real debris that, that slid. I, I believe a much more significant slide. The people that are standing on top of the slide are, uh, in the middle of South Franklin Street. So that's mud and rock that is the height of those cars. So I think we can infer 68, 10 feet of mud. And the building that is farthest away is the cold storage, which would be just south of the library. So this essentially is right at the entrance to the parking garage of the Marine Park Garage and Library. If, uh, if the clerk can go back to the first slide. You can see on the, the right-hand side, there's a big gray area. That was the waste rock that they used to fill. That waste rock's not there anymore. So a lot of that fill material brought down, brought soils down to the road. Uh, scrolling down a little more, uh, we can go to number three. That, that's what? So this is today. So that's the two, you can see 259 and two, 265 and two 69 Gaston Avenue, the blue house and the greenhouse, they're both there. The, uh, yellow, yellow house to their left, uh, is a relatively new building that has been damaged in a in a mudslide and probably the 10-year horizon in between the two, uh, is the location of the 1920 slide. That chute is semi-active. I would say about every 10 years, we've cleaned up something, um, on the road from it. It did bring sticks and branches into the yellow house known as the Strasba apartment. Uh, and for many years, that section of the road was actually a bridge. So after, after, no longer was a timber pier boardwalk, uh, whenever the road got filled in, they left that stretch as a bridge. Uh, and when we reconstructed the road 15 years ago, we removed the bridge.
So, sorry, the 1920 slide is the one to the left of the historic foundation?
The 19, I'll just go ahead and point it out.
To the left of the 265.
Correct. Uh, and then if we can go to the next slide. So those are, that's the rough location of the railroad. And if you go where we've been having our seasonal campground, uh, you can look up at the ruins of the mill site. So the mill site was where they crushed and processed ore before loading it onto barges or discharging it into the rock dump. The railroad side hilled, uh, several thousand feet alongside, um, the hill. It's a, the, the mill site itself is fairly intact. In the, in the memo, I have a bunch of, uh, you know, my end notes. So I was trying to figure out how to write you a memo that didn't whamble all over the place. And I actually had a couple of people say, I like the end note style, you know, a way to get like other things in there. It, it does actually offer us some very useful opportunities. There are mining tunnels around the mill site and you can, you can do a very, um, quick and dirty geo-technical investigation. And you can see the competency of the rock in the hillside. These tunnels haven't collapsed. You can see depth of soil on top of them. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's useful in understanding our hillside. In the location of the 1920, uh, slide, you can, you can see, you can see bedrock in that stream channel and several other ones that have been active over the years. You can see bedrock as well. It's helpful in understanding the amount of soil, um, that could be mobilized in a slide. So part of my rationale and making a recommendation to you is that I, I do believe those two large slides that are, uh, one over 100 years and one slightly less than 100 years are two big events. Were related to the mining activity. And while we should be, you know, very careful and thoughtful about assessing our slide hazard situation in town. Um, I do think those two have special circumstances. So just a little bit of the mining history. The, the information that we can glean out of it, I think is really, really important to us. I also, um, have studied to the extent possible, some of the events around the region. So, so we've had, uh, you know, big, uh, and, and tragic events. People dying in Haynes and in Sitka both, um, and a really significant event. And probably more events coming in Skagway. Um, and, and I've tried to understand those as much as possible. They're, they're really different, I think, than our situation. Um, but I'm going to call out the Haynes event as one that it's hard to understand why Haynes slid. It, it's really, really hard. It's a low angle, uh, forested slope. It doesn't look steep like Mount Roberts. It, it looks like Douglas Island. It looks like the kind of thing that could happen anywhere. And maybe, uh, the science will get to the point where they can identify why Haynes slid. But I think it's a cautionary tale, um, in that we live in mountain country. And, and mountains can be unstable and we don't necessarily know, um, how or why. Coming a little bit forward to our events of September. I have been talking to the, the property owners, um, and they've asked, they've, they've asked, is there a C V J role in this? Can you help? You know, and I've told them I'd like to, but there's a big but. We are the backyard neighbor of tens of miles of property owners throughout the borough. And we are very institutionally averse from, um, getting, uh, onto steep slopes, uh, and making any changes. You know, the basic principle, I think Mr. Palmer will agree with me on this is if you get up on a hillside and you do some activity, a key tenant of responsibility is going to be who touched it last. And we just simply cannot be for mountainsides all over the borough. And in fact, we own, we own many of them. Not to say that there aren't, um, some small ways that we potentially could work with those owners. They're, they're in meeting with them yesterday. They had proposed some ideas and, uh, we're, we're, we're talking, but that's an area that we, I think, have to be very, very careful.
Madam Mayor has a question.
Just making sure I completely understand you. So if on the land, say this tree event was one of our trees, we aren't liable. However, if we had done some work and then the the area slid, we could potentially be liable. Is that correct?
Mr. Palmer.
This is that fun, uh, opportunity where I get to talk. Uh, so the overarching concept is that if land is in its natural condition and there's some natural event, high rain event, high wind event, a combination of wind and rain. In general, that landowner is not responsible for what happens. And especially when it comes to trees. If a tree falls down, uh, from, from our property on to a private property, in general, we're not responsible for that tree and the damage that's caused by that tree. There are exceptions and some of the exceptions are if we, you know, had reasonable notice that a particular tree was dangerous and we didn't do anything about it, or there was a reasonable opportunity to do something about it, then that can be an exception where we can be liable if that tree falls and damages somebody. Or as, uh, Mr. Watt said, if we did work on a hillside or if A O N P, for example, on, did work on a hillside and for example, cut a bunch of trees, laid them on the ground to decompose and nature doing what nature does somehow turns a tree from being parallel. So across the hillside to turning it, aligning it more like a toboggan, a sled. And it slides down. Whoever cut that tree, if it happened within a 10-year period, could generally be held liable for causing damage to a house or a person below. So the overarching concept is that even though, you know, some part of this slide or tree event occurred on our land, in general, we're not, I don't believe we're liable or responsible because there's nothing that we did or contributed to, uh, causing this event to occur.
Just, where'd you get the 10 years? What's 10 years?
Yeah. So, uh, fun, uh, fact of Alaska law. If you do a construction project, you are liable in general for 10 years. It's called the statute of repose. We, most of us know of something called the statute of limitations. There's also a creature called the statute of repose. And if you, uh, for these type of activities, you're on the hook for 10 years. After 10 years, you're generally off the hook.
Just while we're on that topic, so I'm clear. If, if a homeowner was like above my house, there's a tree caught in other trees. It's dangerous. We would do what?
Yeah. I'll, I'll start on this one. So this one gets a little tricky. So flatland, it's a lot easier. Flatland, we can look at a tree, identify if it's a hazard with a, uh, with some expertise and then we can, you know, develop a reasonable response. And usually that involves removing the tree, cutting it down. Steep slopes are different. So steep slopes require a different level of analysis and it's a compounding analysis. If we remove that tree, how do we do it? How do we, you know, if it is a hazard, the question is, is it more of a hazard to remove it or is it more of a hazard to leave it there? And, uh, does that property owner down below have to incur some risk to being there? And the default answer is property owners on steep slopes have to incur some risk for being there. And so it's a really tough lesson. Um, but usually that's why insurance covers trees is to remedy that scenario because there are times actually more dangerous for us to remove a tree than it is for us to cut it.
Several weeks ago, I, I can't remember who was in the conversation, but either the mayor or the deputy mayor, or maybe both, and somebody, one of you asked a question about trees. And I think some combination of the three of us started laughing and we said, you have no idea how much time we spend on trees. Literally our lands division, which is just Mr. Blydon and Ms. Duckworth, literally, uh, I, I think something more than around half or more of Roxy's time on trees. Parks and Rec, um, our, our, uh, landscape maintenance supervisor is our arborist. He goes out and he looks at, when people call up and say, I think you have a bad tree. I want you to look at this tree. We go look at trees. You have no idea how much time we spend on trees. So we, we are a lot of people's, um,
Neighbor. Yeah.
Okay. Carrying, carrying on. So we've got something, um, new up on the, the slide there. Um, so this is, this is not in the pack, uh, red folder. Excuse me. This, this is the hazard map. Prepared by the consultant. So, uh, this is city hall right here. And then, you know, here's our cruise ship duck, uh, 16V, uh, fair enough. And, uh, Franklin Street and Gaston Avenue. These two black boxes, uh, are the, the two homes that were, uh, damaged, destroyed. And this is, this is the path. The purple line is an engineered, uh, slope, um, which would be the retaining wall on the downhill side of Gaston Avenue. So that slide, which was a big event, I think, uh, compared to what we have historically seen, stopped here uh, at the road. The consultants who prepared these hazard maps came up with, uh, their low, moderate and high and severe scheme. And they've drawn severe hazard all the way to, uh, the far side of South Franklin Street. And they've put, uh, city hall in a moderate zone and that moderate zone extends all the way over to, um, the wharf. So they've, they've, they've mapped a lot of our community, uh, in hazard zone. And if we can go to the next slide.
Mr. Watt, did you color the city hall red?
I colored city hall, just so you could find it.
Confusing.
You like the artistic flair.
Well, it's just that it's like, did it just? Is that severe? Suddenly it's severe hazard. So I was like, what the heck? Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
It's the limited, limited palette suite.
They knows where the people live that we, controlling the emergencies. I don't know.
In, in the, in the full map page, uh, and I'm just doing this because I wanted to show you something that they had categorized as high. So, uh, not very much of town got high. Uh, they had severe and then they've got the moderate areas. But over here, this is, this is the Highlands. They labeled high and here in the yellow, uh, this would be Evergreen Cemetery, the Barron's Ave neighborhood. My house actually, um, is, uh, moderate. So just putting those up there to help you maybe understand, uh, the recommendations that, that I have in this meta memo. So with regard to avalanche. Yep.
Yeduck. Just really quick. I'm, I'm super curious. The, the high zone kind of whittles through town. And, and why is that high zone kind of?
We, we made that comment to the consultant. So the, the wiggle through town actually follows a, a long telephone hill, um, the slope below the state office building around the, the knob that the governor's house and the little neighborhood up top is on until it winds its way back over. For some reason, they felt that slope was a high hazard slope. I guess my comments to them were high compared to what? So, so really in, in my view, um, moderate and high are properties that, okay, maybe the mountainside collapsed, could collapse, or maybe, uh, the slope telephone hill could collapse, but those types of issues I think can be dealt with, with a building permit and don't rise to the level of a hazard that we should think about, um, a development restriction for. Does that answer your question? And actually thank you for that because I think that helped, helped me get to where I was trying to go, uh, with the recommendation. So in, in my recommendation, uh, avalanche maps are more or less the same avalanches. The data's pretty good. We can measure it. Mr. Matisse measures the snowpack, the weather service can, you know, watch the, the events. We feel like the science is there to tell people it is high avalanche hazard and you have been a high avalanche area. This might be a good time to temporarily not be there. So avalanche hazard, I think, uh, the recommendation is mirror the current code. Landslide's a little tricky and my recommendation is a, in, in a severe, uh, and then we're going to packet page 50. Thank you. So no, no restrictions in low, moderate or high, uh, single family permissible in severe. And any development greater in density than single family has to go to the planning commission. And I think the commission, uh, and the community development department can sort out the mechanisms that they would look at for denser development in that zone.
So thank you, Mr. Manager. This is really, really helpful. That any development density greater than single family, that's development density in severe hazard area greater than In severe hazard area greater than single family. So some of the things that are being looked at right now, but you know, we've we've been entertaining. Of late that would fit in that category. Uh because when when I look at this map and I know we talked about the red area extending down to South Franklin and. Kind of talked about it in the context of the glory hall and you know, I just remember. That that prior conversation where we're all kind of. And and even the old hotel that got shut down, what is that called? The? Berg Bergman, right? That was in severe hazard and so all of a sudden we're saying, well, I'll like all of half of downtown Juno is. And I remember you kind of having sort of a reasonable approach to that and I I think that maybe that reasonable approach is reflected. In these special engineering measures for. Multiple family or multi-person places.
Uh Deputy Mayor, I will, I certainly strive for a reason. I don't know that I always hit the target, but uh certainly that's the goal. Um so yes, uh the the idea would be uh in a severe area, the the dark red. Um you would have to go to the commission for anything denser than a single family home. In effect, that's kind of what happened with the glory halls project. Uh in in I, in effect, I think the commission and staff kind of muddled through that a little bit where they tried to tackle it. Uh maybe without the greatest guidance uh in science. Um Mr. Uh. Sangson's uh Gasto lodges uh project, I think if, you know, he probably will get to the commission. Uh before we change the code, but a project like that, again, I think we would be asking the applicant um to. Uh work with their condition, um make their own proposals about special engineering. Um and to deal with it. So that's that's kind of the point of departure. That I am uh recommending that the assembly uh accept to give to the commission uh to start this process.
Who has questions or comments? Go ahead, Mahal Gidok.
Yeah, um maybe this is a good question from our for former risk assessment folks, but. Um what would this mean in terms of or have we done any kind of baseline analysis of how many? Current existing homes, this would impact in terms of their insurance that they're having to carry.
Uh through the deputy mayor, uh Mr. Palmer advises that C D I think has compiled a bunch of information like that. Um so I think what? What we have is mapping comparisons of old to new, um but what we don't have a good understanding of is how. Um private insurance sellers will will respond to that, so we can get you that information uh on the twenty eighth. Quite a bit more.
I'm I'm trying to remember, um was some of the concerns? Because you can't get earth movement insurance anyway. I mean, you you can in some cases for ungodly amounts of money, but. None of those places are downtown are insured for earth movement that I would know of, but I think also. One of the things that people were expressing concern about was actually just being able to get a mortgage. Um is it and maybe maybe some of that information would help as well.
And uh through the deputy mayor for for the uh three effective property owners from the September twenty sixth event. You can bet their insurance companies will be um trying to decide whether they believe the damage was from tree falling. From water flooding or from mass mass wasting landslide. Uh and the if the insurance companies aren't disposed to um pay claims, they will be arguing that it was. Uh dirt landslide. Um and the property owner's best argument, I think, is trees. Uh and there is a preponderance of evidence that trees were the causative factor in the damage. Um certainly, the uh number of trucks of uh material that we hauled away was nearly entirely trees. Um and when you look at the structures, you know, you're not seeing mud splashes against the side of them. You're seeing where they got hit by. Uh blunt impact from trees. But we can, we can uh provide um more information on the twenty eighth on the on those topics.
I would say that Ms. Kester's memos calls it a channelized landslide. Several times.
That that's correct. So so uh Ms. Kester's memo is a compilation of our uh volunteer effort. Uh the volunteer geologists um were very specific at that in their opinion, this should be called a landslide. Um so from a geologist standpoint, that might be one thing. But I think we're talking about this probably from uh an insurer's standpoint.
Ms. Hughes Candy said Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh thanks, Mr. Watt, for this. This is a. Huge thing and I appreciate your uh, I appreciate this. I don't feel like I rambles. It's a lot. To tackle, so I think this is a good starting point and um. I'm, I tentatively, you know, I think this is, like I said, it's it's a starting point and I want to dig into it more before the next meeting. But the in the aim of trying to find reason, I know that this is how our code currently is. But what is our logic in allowing single family residency in severe hazard? And not other development because that's never made sense to me.
Mr. Watt.
Um, thank you, Chair. So I I think the logic is that um. Unlike uh um let's say uh low lying properties in a flood zone. Where you can generally predict um if there is a high rainfall event, a high water event. The water is going to rise and you can predict where it's going to go and where homes are going to flood and you have a reason not to allow development. Below a certain base flood elevation is the term of art. On steep slopes, um I think we have a much less certainty on being able to predict. Uh landslides and mass wasting. Um and I think it comes down to a horizon and probability event. Um in the the map that we don't have up there anymore, um the consultants showed. Uh the severe hazard area coming to. The entire uh far side of South Franklin Street, the whole run for the better part of a mile. Um have we seen that? No. Is it possible? I guess so, but is it possible in? Um or is it likely? In a hundred year time period or a five hundred year time period or a thousand or what? Um Assembly Member Tree is not here. Uh we would be having a conversation about statistics in the break room. Um and maybe we'll have that the the next time, but in one of my end notes, I think I called it do the math. These these types of events that would get uh debris to the other side of Franklin Street. I think are greater than one in a hundred year events. They are um much, much less likely. We just saw a big event. Um on September twenty sixth. And in my view, um it really didn't change what I've come to understand about the hillside. The bedrock is competent, uh the slope is steep, the soils are relatively thin. Um the the drainage channels uh are relatively incised. We have events that that. Um wash the surface soils out and then they're relatively stable for a while and then roots and trees and branches and. Organic matter build up and they they come out again. So getting back to uh Assembly Member Hugh Scandi's question. Um I I think that the the difficulty we have as a municipality is. Deciding what's good for the community um in terms of development restrictions. But we're also talking about um, do we have a solid foundational basis to? Um tell somebody that they can't do something with a piece of private property. Uh you you'll find through the public testimony uh that we're going to have diverse public view of that. Um and and you'll find that a lot of people uh feel like. You know, they think the risk is okay and it's acceptable. Um and it's allowed them to uh own or. Um we haven't had much new construction or renovate uh structures in an economical way and live in an advantageous location. So I think you're going to see that tension. Do you let people do what they want to do? Do you you make a can uh decision for the broader community at large to restrict? Um development and potentially protect protect public safety. So allowing the single family home. It it tries to walk a very fine line between those two ideas.
Just just as a follow up, I appreciate that. I almost hear that as we have a bunch of single family homes at the base of. Uh the mountain and this is where the town is, which is fine if that's what we're. If that's the needle we're threading, this is where our community is. It's mostly single family home. I'm just trying to. As we go through this process, if there's slightly bigger than that. That prevents C D D and and the planning commission from really getting into it when someone wants to put something there. Then I'd be interested in looking at that rather than, you know, just single family home while we have the opportunity to be reshaping it. But um thanks, I appreciate that.
Uh thanks, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. I I appreciated this memo too. There there's so much here and just as a. I just want to say, you know, our immediate task is dealing with these hazard maps and I'm glad that's where the focus is. Right now, but I think there's some bigger. Things to discuss that are in here um that are worth discussing at some point after we deal with the hazard maps in terms of um. You know, their their future study, there was definitely some things in the report uh recommended that. You know, are worth us checking out and looking into um that, you know, could be big risks to our city. Um and you know, I know that predicting landslides is not something that we can do, but. There's certainly ways to get more data so that people are more informed. I mean, you know. I hang out with more weather nerds than most people probably, but when when it's been raining for six days and then we're about to get a bunch of rain. And it's windy, certainly that the odds are are higher and, you know, there's more work to be done there. So. That's that's my first ramble. Second part, just some information items that I would like before. Next time, um if possible. Um, you know, when when we heard from the public, for the planning commission, heard from the public, I think there was. Quite a few people kind of focused on the policy and and some people focused on kind of the technical merits of the report. And I know there was a draft at the that time and I believe there's been a finalized version. Is there any way to get kind of a summary of some of the substantive? Changes that were made. Is that possible?
Mr. Watt.
Thanks.
We can do that.
Cool. Um.
Did they change things from the comment to the final?
I believe so, yeah. Um. I would like, I lo- I like that this has a list of kind of special engineering considerations, peak drainage. Special foundations, debris flow diversion mechanisms. Is it maybe getting a little bit more information on? Those things and why you're proposing them would be helpful. And then my last question is, um. You you touched on kind of like people who had engineering reports. Do we have to kind of make the determination about whether those are gonna? If if people already had the map boundaries readjusted. Do those, do those, are those more important than than these new maps? Do we have to make that policy decision?
Mr. Watt.
Uh yeah, Deputy Mayor, so if you if you read my memo, you could tell I was conflicted by that uh recommendation of. Uh you know, if if these are the maps, are they the maps forevermore until we change them? As a municipality or do we allow an avenue for a private party? Um to change the maps and so the the argument that I. Most comfortable with is letting somebody make the case to change the maps because maybe they, maybe the maps are wrong and maybe they have more information. Um, of course, I'm uncomfortable because uh inevitably, the person that's going to want to change the maps is. You know, they're going to be self-interested in representing their property and they're probably going to. Do a less diligent effort uh maybe than the consultants did. Um and and maybe they're going to be uh biased towards their client. Um uh in in and I I fell on the side of. Uh the never be perfect and we need to afford citizens the opportunity. Depending on the development standards that we come up with, um it may not be necessary. Uh if if we come up with a way that uh there's a path to develop and you can. Um you can create your own engineering solutions. Um layered on top of that, of course, is all the financial and banking issues and how that all works. So so I think that's that's an area that needs more work.
Someone else raising, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, um. I I had written down the overlay of the maps, but it sounds like that exists, but that'd be helpful for me to see. And then the other thing that. Some people have brought up to me before um is. Does mitigation is is that? Is that an avenue for trying? A- anyway, is is mitigation something that needs to be? Is that a reasonable action for anyone to take? I mean, we were talking about liability and touching the tree and blah blah blah, but anyway. Is mitigation something that needs to be addressed or considered?
So so in terms of mitigation, um I'm not sure there's really much to be done. So in the in the consultant's map, so you've got the. The red fingers that shoot up the hillside and the little note on the side, I think the. The things that shoot up the hillside are initiation zones and then down low deposition zones that uh. Yeah, initiation and runout is what they refer them to them as. Um, I don't think anybody can go up in those initiation zones and do anything. Um that would improve the current situation. It actually would make it worse. Um. We have, when we rebuilt the road, uh we uh we did as much as we could to put. Uh more storm drainage pipes in there than than you could imagine. So that everybody has the opportunity to connect storm drain pipes in. Several owners run pipes up the hillside. To try and collect water above their homes. Uh and there's a constant tension between. Um, will you help me with this water coming off your hillside behind my home and? No, that's your pipe. That's not our pipe. Um and and people are in kind of a managed situation there. So take us two kind of separate things. I don't know if that that helped answer your question.
More questions? Madam Mayor.
Um I would move that staff continue their analysis of this heading towards us adopting the both the landslide and avalanche maps. And eventually drafting ordinances for the commission. And ask for an answer when it's at.
Any comments? Everybody good? We'll see this again, bring in your questions and we'll do it again. Thank you. Um, one more thing. Mr. Shop, sorry, we made you wait to the end, but hopefully this will not take too long because you did us an excellent memo. Um. And I I have one question for you right off about the youth activities board. I, yep, no, we're not recessing. We have one one last item and I have a question for Mr. Schaff right off. The bat.
Madam Chair.
What?
Can I just uh make a note for the record that we did lose Miss Trem um about eight thirty ish?
Um, okay.
Through our.
So we got one more item, one more focusing thing. Okay, Mr. Shaw, go ahead.
I do not have a presentation prepared. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Who has questions? Who has questions? Mi- Wahagirak.
Yeah, I was just wondering, do you? So. I guess it's a two part question. What are you proposing the size of this board would be? And how many people would we be losing essentially? Like, how many people are currently serving? I know that you said 30% are unfilled that are ginned. But how many people would we potentially be losing? Go ahead.
Through the chair. Thank you for the question. We have not drafted any legislation yet proposing a new committee. The current Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee has nine members. That's what most of our our boards and committees have. Altogether, we have 43. Seats when we're completely full, which we've never been as long as I've been here. So I hope hope that answers the question. I I don't know, but I think nine is is a fairly standard number for our committees.
Mrs. Skidys.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Mr. Shaf. This is good. I support this. How do you have you thought anymore about? How you would fold people in or would you just keep this bracket? And everybody whose board is going away, you're off. Or would you try to maybe hold them in? Not if you have.
Mr. Chef.
Thank you through the chairs. That's a very good question. I think definitely one of the pieces of the conversation that I've been having with a lot of the board chairs. Has focused on making sure that the interests of these different facilities and programs is represented in a reorganized committee. There are a number of ways that you could do that. You could call that out in the legislation establishing. A committee specifically saying that you wanted to designate seats for different programs, facilities or interests. You could also have aspirational language that you want to encourage. Diverse representation of the community and and of those different activities. So I think there are a lot of different ways that we could do that again. Not something that we've put pen to paper on yet.
Thanks. Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. A handful of years ago and prior to the pandemic, when I was the Chair of H R C. I believe we went over a topic similar to this that we have 39. Boards that serve Juno or might have been 40. And it was the highest number of any city in Alaska by far. We have way more boards and committees than anybody. And so we took a, we tried to look at what it would. What it would take toward boards and committees. Because of how much staff time, dollar figures goes into preparing. All of these committees only to, well, for the, how much savings, time savings? Do you anticipate would be able to recoup from having more efficient? Meeting.
Mr. Chef.
Thank you through the chair. Thank you for the question. It kind of depends if the meeting frequency may increase. That's that's a possibility for for fewer committees. But at a minimum, I think we could save 300 to 500 hours a year of staff time required to prepare. Attend and do things like complete meeting minutes for a lot of our committees. I will acknowledge we're pretty far behind in our minutes because we have been short staffed the last few months. So that's that's an area that we've really struggled with. In order to support our our boards and our committees. So I I think easily measured in the hundreds of hours.
Well, get up then met a mayor and then Mr. Smith and then Ms. Hale. Go ahead.
Just one additional thing, I'm supportive as well in the next phase of of. The ordinance coming before us. I would also like to see a breakdown since you're talking diversity of actual diversity. What is our makeup of minorities, women, what have you?
Okay, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Mr. Schaff and I spoke on the stairwell today. Because number five is the youth activities board, and it was a little confusing in his memo about what his thoughts were on that and. Just have you say your thoughts on that, that the youth activities board was not going to be looked at being. Combined with these other ones.
Mr. Chef.
Thank you for the question. Yet. So the youth activities board, I think for a number of reasons. Wouldn't be a body that we would be considering to merge into another committee. Youth Activity Board. It requires a lot of work and it's very specialized. Participation by those board members and reviewing all the applications that they get, all those programs and making those decisions. That said, I think we have really exceptional opportunities to streamline the process for the youth activities board grants. And, you know, even within our own department, there are probably ways that we can reorganize things a little bit to make it a more efficient process. But I think really it's it's what the youth activities board does is. Very task oriented. So they make funding decisions. And what our other committees do is really advise the assembly and the department on operations and programs.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. As the incoming H R C Chair, looking at board consolidation was definitely something kind of like a priority and. Just want it to be known that we haven't even met yet and we're already making it happen.
Good job.
And as the incoming Prakley, as I hope this doesn't mean our Prak meetings are going to be like seven hours long now.
Well, you win some news, son. Ms. Hale.
Oh, thank you. That's a good segue for me, but I will never be that funny. I I am just. Your your memo, Mr. Schaff, and the the conversation just really brings to mind. Some of what I've heard from Madam Clerk about how much work all of these boards and commissions that we have. Are for staff. And so I'm really excited that the H R C is going to. Dig deeper and follow the lead that Mr. Mr. Schaff has blazed the the trail for us.
And as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I agree with this direction and and what you all are saying, but I think the, you know, the. Flip side of the coin, of course, is that. You know, we're we're losing something here too. There's many. This is this is how we get the community involved in in our projects and and this will be less involvement and. So I would just before we move forward. Like a maybe more specific. Outlining of kind of what what decisions these boards were making that we would be losing, you know, I'm. I imagine, you know, if you're. A user of the ice rink and you use this as a way to make sure your. Interest is represented, then that might be something that goes away. And and so that should still have an avenue and of. Of engagement for those stakeholders in if it's not serving on a board in some other way. So I would just like to. See a little bit more about that as we move forward.
One thing I would say is this is a good start. But the specifics about how would you appoint them and who would be on them and would you have a specific seats? That's what we'd have to start talking about or start sketching out. And at least for the first round, my opinion would be the nine seats would be. That the assembly should appoint those nine because they're. The first nine and maybe after that it goes to the H R C or whatever. I mean, just to make sure that the first nine, especially if there's. Whatever, 30, maybe? People that are doing this right now, maybe something like that, or I don't know. Probably less because the youth activities board has nine. Anyway, whatever. We'd have to figure out a process for that. What will we do? And would we have one seat for aquatics and one seat for or not? That's just the debate we should have. I I know when you do that, you, well, anyway, you could have that debate later. I don't need to start it. But we could have that. No, I won't. Shut up. Did you want to say? Did you want to say something? Okay. Okay. Any more points about this? Everybody's, you know, relatively supportive, want no more. You you need anything else from us, Mr. Chef? Besides this conversation, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think I think we're just looking for conceptual approval tonight. And then we'll we'll start sketching out all those things you talked about and bring them back to you. And I'll just note that I'm very pleased to hear that Mr. Smith is agreeable to six hour Prak meetings.
I think you have your conceptual approval here and no promises about votes, but. Anything else for anybody? Anybody want to say more things? Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Deputy.
Whatever.
Excuse me. Just for clarification on this, are we? Running on two two simultaneous tracks, one in Cow and one in H R C or?
No.
Just just.
Cow. We're we're this is in the cow now and we'll hear. He's taking the credit.
The work will be in here. Okay.
We could send this to the H R C. Who's talking?
I just wanted to make.
Wait, 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 stop, stop, stand by. We could send this now to the H R C. Or do you want? No, want to keep it here? Okay, okay, never mind. We're keeping in here. Thank you for the question, Madam Clerk. You have a question or you have a confusion or a question, Mrs. Gaddis?
No, I guess I just want to send it to the H R C. And I wasn't sure. I heard one loud no, and I was like, maybe I heard many soft yeses. So I was just checking.
Madam Mayor wants to tell you to vote tomorrow. Don't forget to vote. I'm sure this group will not forget to vote. Uh, okay, we are adjourned. Yeah, cow, cow.